... place for public hearing for the Waverly Health Center Expansion Project Site Plan Review and Amendment. Mayor and the City Council would entertain any comments. After all comments, hearing will be cleared closed, and an action will be taken. So I think we'll have a presentation by members of the hospital staff, and then we'll let the public see if there's some questions.
Very good. Thank you all for your time this evening. My name is Jim Atty from the Waverly Health Center. With me is Heidi Solheim, our COO. We wanted to share with you the site plan for the hospital, which is the reason for us being here, and then show off just a little bit of what we have planned for inside of the building. So we did meet with the Planning and Zoning Board. We were able to share some of this as well, and I think allayed any questions or answered any questions, allayed any fears that they might have had. I believe we'd like to start by just showing you the current site plan, so where we are right now, as you can see. I don't know if we're going to be able to quite show the comparisons together, but quite the expansion that will come off the southwest side of our building. This will house predominantly new clinic space and a new emergency room. Unfortunately, right now, the space that we are using for our emergency services does go back to the 1964 and is in need of some TLC. The outline right here does represent 30,000 square feet of new build. Right behind it will be some heavy renovation, not shown on this picture right here, but another 40,000 square feet. So 70,000 square feet of our property that will have a roof on it will get touched. When you look at the site itself, you can see that our property really does extend and expand onto what we've called the old golf course, the old golf course holes, okay? So first and foremost, you can see some pretty significant new parking right here. This will be predominantly used for our emergency room. And right down here, which is an extension of our current red parking lot, to give us, again, quite a few more parking spots for employees. We have grown over the past few years, and unfortunately are spilling off into the streets. Feel like this will do a good job of hopefully giving us the opportunity to be better neighbors and not crowd the people that are living in close proximity. Come around to the front, the green entrance, which is typically known as our main entrance. You will see that we will be straightening the road once you enter the facility to create really a circle that allows you to traverse the whole building. And I'll come back to that in one second and why that's important. But on the green entrance, for those that have had to come into the green entrance, you'll notice that it's a tiered parking, it's a tiered parking lot with not many spaces on the ground level. Right now, this also houses our physical therapy, and so as you can imagine, especially in snowy weather, how difficult it can be for those patients to have to go up and down the stairs to go to a place where they may be trying to deal with a hip or a knee that's been replaced, and getting around is already difficult. So we're able to add ground level parking as well as quite a few more handicap spots to service what really is a high-traffic entrance, okay? So as we look at that circle, one of the, one of the keys to the renovation and the design that we've tried to tackle is the wayfinding, okay? This hospital has expanded very quickly over the course of the past 20 years, and with that have come some challenges with navigating the building. Once you're on our campus, right now, it's difficult to find our emergency room, okay? If you're coming up this current drive and trying to find our emergency room, sometimes it can be quite difficult to know if you're in the right spot. And even if you do get to the door, if you know which door you're supposed to go into, it doesn't necessarily feel like you're supposed to be there. By creating this path that truly does go around the building, we'll be able to get better lines of sight and better guidance so that it truly does feel like, you know, yes, okay, this is where I'm supposed to be. This is the emergency, this is the emergency entrance, okay? To help you find our campus, we will be lining up the, the drive to come into our facility with Fourth Street right here. So this is the maintenance shed. This will primarily be used for employees and for trucks hitting our loading docks, but most of the traffic will be directed here. So this new, this four-way right here, once you get right to about here, you'll be able to look up and truly see a big sign that says "Emergency" and say "This Way," and you'll be able to come right up and see exactly where you're, where you need to go and hopefully expedite the process and release some apprehensions that already come along with going to the emergency room, okay? So with the site plan, this is, this is really the aerial view and really does show what our proposed changes are to the, to the site, okay? I do believe that this is the crux of the conversation tonight. However, we did want to take the opportunity to look at just the inside, just give you a little taste. This is step one of our planning. We have, we will take what we learned tonight to our board meeting next week, where we will be talking about the final budget and where we will be talking about moving forward with putting out bids, okay? So this is subject to potentially change, but our hope is, is that once we get tonight behind us, next week behind us, not to be presumptuous, that we can truly just push the snowball down the hill and really get going with the proposed groundbreaking of January of next year, okay? So once again, just to give you your, some bearings here, you can see the new addition and where we currently are in the dotted line showing where the new, the new build versus renovation will be. When we go into the actual insides, you'll see that we have two new entrances. These will be the ones that you'll be able to see from the street, as I had mentioned. One will be for the emergency room, okay? The emergency room really doesn't grow in square footage, however, being able to utilize new technology, just the new operations, implementing new technologies, it will be significantly more efficient once we set it up in the way that an emergency room should be set up, okay? Likewise, we will have a drive-in, drive-out ambulance garage that lead right into trauma bays, okay? Key to this is getting people in and getting them right to where they need to go and removing as much travel inside the building. Again, just setting this up the best way possible to make sure that care can be delivered as quickly as possible, okay? On the other side of this wall, really what we're trying to accomplish here is getting a majority of our outpatient services all in one area, okay? So the Christofal Clinic, which is the Waverly Health Center's primary care clinic, is our busiest clinic. It is downstairs by our orange entrance, and we felt that as that continues to grow and as we continue to see the need for more and more family practice, that this did merit an expansion, okay? So we will be able to accommodate quite a few more providers when the time comes, but more importantly, we will be able to set them next to some already established adjacencies. Radiology and lab will already be directly down the hall. If they need to travel, they no longer need to come up and, individuals no longer need to come up an elevator and try to find their way. We do a lot of escorting to get people from point A to point B in our facility, okay? Likewise, we have our outpatient medical services, so if somebody's coming in for an injection or an infusion, this is an area where we'll be able to, individuals will be able to pop in and pop out without having to traverse the whole building. We have the opportunity to renovate some space to create more clinical space. We've chosen to move our general and bariatric surgery in our orthopedics clinic right here. Those are very reliant on lab and radiology. And so once again, trying to remove steps from an individual's time in the hospital was why we chose to stick these to where we did. You're still traveling this main hallway with a good line of sight to be able to see outpatient medical, Christofal, the clinics, and then respiratory and cardiovascular therapy. And if you do need to hit the lab, the lab and the radiology are right here, okay? So this will create a new entry point to the hospital. When individuals continue to come into the green entrance, which we do anticipate, we will maintain our registration desk right here. As you come in, we've created, we've created a right angle. Right now, if you were to walk into the facility, I see a couple of people up there that notice you really don't have good clean lines of sight, okay? Once you register and come out of your registration bay, we will be able to direct you, again, right to the key services, eliminate the steps, and hopefully eliminate some of the wayfinding issues, okay? This is, these are really the keys that we wanted to show tonight. Obviously, there's a lot more detail that we could go into. We could spend the entire evening talking about that. In the interest of time, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Going back to the site plan, the, you mentioned more parking space for employees and that you thought that that would, I think, well, you didn't fully say address it. My question is, will it address the concerns that we've heard from the neighbors about parking on the street, and will your employees be able to park in the spaces that you have planned?
With the new expansion, we are going to be offering 125 additional parking spaces, and a lot of those will be dedicated for staff parking. We did an assessment. We looked at our busiest times as a hospital, when we had the most employees on. The city asked us to do a full parking analysis, so we did put some math to it, made sure that we do have ample space for that for the future.
One concern that I've had with the hospital is the, kind of the entrances. I noticed that the entrance there at 10th and Second, kind of the main driving entrance, because there's not a stop sign on Second, it always seems pretty treacherous getting across. Is there any discussions to perhaps turn that into a four-way stop? And I'm also looking at the entrance kind of there on the southeast corner, if that's going to be a four-way stop.
What we would ultimately change, what we would potentially change?
We have not requested any of those areas. I think Second Avenue probably would cause some issues because of the train tracks that are there. We did have our civil engineers do an assessment of line of sight. We had initially investigated moving the green entrance lot to this area here. When the civil engineers looked at it, they felt it would be less safe because there was shorter reaction time. And then you had to start looking at multiple points because the roads weren't lining up. As far as mitigating it, we really feel that people are going to decide where the best place for them to park is, and they'll use that entrance to make it easier. We do have it where it goes all the way around, where most people don't realize right now they can drive behind the hospital here. It feels like it's kind of an offstage area. There's equipment, there's old garages and some other areas there. So we really do feel that this will help mitigate it, and then lining it up with Fourth Avenue should also make it better because you have fewer people turning in different spots. Everybody will kind of be going in connection with each other for that part. So we don't anticipate it will make any difference or worse than what it is right now. It should actually improve it quite a bit.
Jim, I appreciated your comments about wayfinding. My experience going into the hospital is that it always feels like a maze to me, and I'm really good at getting lost. And you remember that you had to help me out once upon a time because I couldn't figure out where I was supposed to go. Would you guess that the, this new configuration will make that seem better or worse?
Significantly better, okay? When we went into this project, we, we had three real key issues that we wanted to tackle. Number one was the new emergency room. Number two was expanding clinical space, and number three was wayfinding, okay? Right now, we have many individuals who have to travel different floors to get from point A to point B. In an attempt to consolidate everything really into that L that we've created, we should have a majority of our patients who come in for clinical services in that one hall, the, the two hallways, okay? And so if we could keep people contained and we can keep individuals really, the ability to look and see down the hallways and see where they're going, that should help and eliminate the need to truly traverse the entire hospital.
Well, on a positive note, I have to say the volunteer escorts are really helpful, and they, fortunately, they not only seem to know where they're going, but they actually do, so. I try to pay attention to them and try to tag along, so that's, that's really a good feature that we've got.
This is more a comment than a question, but I was also going to ask a similar question that Brian just did about that intersection, and I'm wondering, I guess this is more for staff, but if there's a way to, when we do the traffic study in the spring, if there's a way to, you know, pay particular attention to, or at least not particular attention, but incorporate these plans into that so that we could get perhaps some assessment of what would be best for entrances to the hospital? The existing structure, whether something, whether there would be recommendations for something else? I don't know if that's possible, but since we're looking at traffic patterns across the city for the traffic study, I don't know if that could be included or not.
Yeah, we'll certainly look into it. I'm not sure because it's not a signalized intersection if it's on the primary areas that we're going to look at, but we might be able to designate that to have a view, but we'll have to check with the winning consultant to do that and see if it's something they can. We'll certainly list it.
Public has heard the presentation. Continue with the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that has questions, comments for Mr. Atty or Ms. Solheim? Hearing none. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, questions, questions, comments? Or we could entertain a motion to, for Resolution 19-133.
I could just note that I think one of the drawing points for Waverly is that we do have a significant hospital and health center available to citizens of both Waverly but also the surrounding area, and it is a drawing to our community and to, nice to see that they're continuing to look forward as needs grow and expansion grows to keep providing those services at the best, highest quality they can.
I think it'll also be a helpful tool for recruitment of staff. You know, it's getting tougher and tougher to recruit nurses, physicians, other providers, and I think having state-of-the-art facilities, especially a new ER, will be really helpful in that regard.
Can we get a motion to continue?
I just want to note that there were no written comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't read your lips. I'm going to have to try this more often.
Thanks, Carl.
Well, I would move approval of Resolution 19-133 approving the site plan for the Waverly Health Center Expansion Project as Plan Development Amendment pursuant to the Waverly zoning code section 100.17.05.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any other council discussion? Comments? Call, call, vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Haggis.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rocky.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Resolution 19-133, approving the site plan for the Waverly Health Center Expansion is approved 7-0. September is Hunger Action Month, and I have a proclamation to present to the council for approval. Whereas hunger and poverty, excuse me, whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States and in the city of Waverly, and whereas the city of Waverly is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our state and to provide additional resources that citizens of the city of Waverly need, and whereas the city of Waverly is committed to working with the Northeast Iowa Food Bank in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues, and whereas nearly 2,300 individuals in Bremer County rely on food provided by the Northeast Iowa Food Bank and member agencies annually, and whereas the Northeast Iowa Food Bank distributed more than 6-point million meals to member agencies, programs, and food banks in our region in our last fiscal year, and whereas food banks across the country, including the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in their local community. Now therefore, I, Maradine Soash, and the City Council of the City of Waverly does hereby recognize September as Hunger Action Month in the city of Waverly, and we can call this, and we call this observance to the attentions of our citizens. I would entertain a motion to accept the Hunger Proclamation.
I will move approval of proclamation proclaiming September as Hunger Action Month.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
Just a question, maybe you can answer this, Mr. Mayor III, the third, whereas, does the city have any plans to educate citizens about this issue other than passing the proclamation, do you think?
At this time, I don't know of any other than would be through Senior Center, I would, I would anticipate, so.
I'd just be happy to see us put some legs on it because it is an important issue.
I would encourage the Waverly newspapers to devote some column space to talking about this very issue.
Well, one project of the city is the community garden through Leisure Services that, where we harvest, we're into harvesting season right now, so anyone who wants to volunteer can come help. That's Tuesdays from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. and Saturdays from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. There are people there to help. If you don't know how to garden, they'll tell you what to pick and when, so it's one way to get involved.
And the harvest is used for?
Yeah, it goes, the Senior Center uses it, Waverly Homes, some of the community meals at churches in town, the bulk of it goes to the Northeast Iowa Food Bank. Hy-Vee allows us to use their cooler space, and then the food bank comes and picks it up and distributes it. Much of it's in the Waverly area, but in the Cedar Valley.
I know that United Way does a couple of events throughout the year as well, lunches and whatnot.
And there was a couple of fingers in there that I was surprised, I guess maybe it shouldn't be, but 2,300 individuals rely on food provided by others, and 6-point million pounds of meals is, is a lot of, a lot of meals, so.
I caught just a little bit of a Channel 7 clip concerning this, and they had the director of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, and if I caught her comments correctly, she said that the need has not decreased, but the ability to meet that need has increased, so between community gardens, church organizations, those type of things, they're able to supply or have a supply for a larger audience, but the need is still out there, so.
Okay, any other council comments, questions? All those in favor of the proclamation saying, proclaiming September as Hunger Action Month, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Proclamation is hereby approved. Public comments for items not on the agenda. Anyone here that, something that they'd like to talk about that's not on the agenda?
Good evening, Matthew Schneider, Ward 5. On the last, I think it was on the last agenda, we had approved a $15,000 housing study expense to inter cog. And I'm not against housing studies at all, we definitely need to do them, but I guess I just want to know who determines who does these housing studies? Why would we have a council of governments author a study? And is it a study that is done to get a desired outcome? And I guess just kind of looking nationally, I've got a few concerns about what I'm seeing. You know, I've seen at this point dozens of botched traffic studies that are, have been authored to get a desired outcome, and I'm seeing the same thing in housing. And, you know, essentially, you know, what I'm seeing is, you know, they're, the studies are saying that we need affordable housing and pack-and-stack style, dense urban living, and you can go to, you know, a lot of modern cities right now. If you go to Fargo, North Dakota, for example, there's cranes in the air, they're building apartments upon apartments, the developers are getting spiffed, so that, but they're having a tough time renting them out, and it just pushes, it's causing total chaos in the market from, from what I see. So I just want us to make sure that, well, I'll be honest, I'm not fond of the work that I'm seeing council of governments do, and I think that they may be missing market signals, and just hope that we'll take a close look at that study when it, when it comes back in. Thanks.
Anyone else that has anything that's not on the agenda?
My name's Miguel Chavez. I live at 48 Brown Lane. Something to mention, you said Hunger Month. Every Tuesday, the Vineyard Church is the place where they do the food distribution. So those that are in need of food, they go to the Vineyard Church, and they could always use volunteers to carry food. They give a lot of food, and they could always, so even if you're not in need of food, they could really use the help while they're there. So every Tuesday of the month, the second Tuesday, excuse me, of each month, the food is distributed.
And that's just for clarification, Ms. Chavez, that's what, from 3:00 in the afternoon or what are the hours?
Yeah, it's from, the lines start forming around 5:00, they open to the public at 6:00, yeah.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Well, Adam Hoffman, Ward 1, just to piggyback off of what Mr. Chavez shared there. Saints Cafe meal every Monday at St. Paul's Lutheran Church, they offer a community meal. And then every Thursday, Peace United Church of Christ offers a community meal as well in the evening, so just so you're aware.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm David Frederick. I live in the first ward, and I think the first thing I want to say is that we choose to live here. I've been fortunate in my life, I had a career, I lived elsewhere, I worked a lot of places outside of Waverly. We chose to come back here, and I do not regret that decision yet, not at all. One thing I've learned in life is slow, go slow. Why? Because every change brings more change. Every change has unforeseen consequences. I've said that before here in this very room. But when I think about it, what a fantastic place we're living in, with elected officials at school boards, city council, county, all around here, good professional people that do their job. What's been done since we came here in '96? Avenue of the Saints was finished. Anybody here think that Waverly would be the same without the Avenue of Saints? It wouldn't be the same. Fall down and worship Dave Nagel, worked to get it here. The high school, the high school, how much, I don't know, I'd be real curious if somebody here knows how much we actually paid for the high school and how much FEMA paid for it. The middle school, same story. Great new middle school, fantastic educational facilities here. And Wortburg College. I went to Wortburg College in the '60s. I don't know if I could get in today to Wortburg College to be a student there, I certainly wouldn't recognize it just walking into it after I graduated in '65. The dry run improvements. How many town, how many homes in this house are now out of the flood district and not paying for flood insurance? What deal, Main Street? A total makeover on Main Street with infrastructure improvements. New storm sewers, new water facilities, new, new electric lines, fantastic. Optical fiber, high-speed internet, good grief. I didn't have this in Fairfax County in Virginia, the second richest county in the United States. We have it here. We own it. It's not somebody else that I got to beg to come and hook me up anymore. We have a bypass on Highway 3. I know people don't want to call it a bypass. It is a bypass, okay? I go fishing up at Decorah. I love going into Decorah, a thriving downtown that had a bypass. They don't have a main highway through Decorah anymore. Cedar Falls, thriving downtown there. You know what it was like there 20 years ago. I know what it was like 20 years ago down there. Local electric utility, we own it. Again, we own it, we run it. Everybody talks about the W. Not, you know, a lot of people don't like it. I love it. It's a world-class fitness facility, one of the best places you'll find anywhere in the world. My brother-in-law comes here, he stays an extra two or three days because he likes to work out there, and he's been everywhere. So we have low unemployment here, very low unemployment. It's hard to find people to work. We have a diverse economy here with education, with health, a big health sector. If I look at the health sector... at the health sector in this town, it's the biggest employer that we have here, so I'm glad to hear the housing, the hospital plans. Eight years ago, the Director of Economic Development came and talked to Rotary, and said they had a housing survey, the housing survey I just heard about, it was a wonderful study that was done, the big thing it said was that 75% of the people that worked in Waverly didn't live here. Why was that? Not enough housing, not enough middle-income housing, not enough low-cost housing, not enough high-end housing, so I think we know about the builders, a couple, three of them read that study, they're here, they're working here, they're building houses like crazy, there are less than 100 houses for sale available in Waverly, yet this crisis is not over, and I'm glad to see the senior housing development increasing in size, and that's not costing us taxpayers a dime. So change is not comfortable, change makes you all a little bit uncomfortable, it's not like it used to be, but, think about infrastructure, think about the great place this is to live, to grow our children up, we have a growing population here, one of 25 cities in the state of Iowa with a growing population, so, if you don't like change here, imagine living somewhere else, where there is no change, I don't think it'll be fun. So I say, I want to see the studies on both sides of this argument about three-lane and four-lane, all I hear is something about, the fire chief says this, somebody else says that, the public safety people are against it, I don't see any data, nothing, I don't see any public statements by anybody that's in these kind of positions, I see, all I see are things that are claims, unsubstantiated, so, I just want to say, thanks for a great job, I was just down, three times downtown to do some shopping, just a couple of days ago, and it was great to open my car door without worrying about getting run over, it was great to be right next to the store I want to do business with, it was great to have that store here, it wasn't here six months ago, so, these are good things, keep up the good work, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments for items not on the agenda? We'll move on then, to consent calendar, consisting of the following items, pay request from AHTS Architects for the Waverly Senior Housing 420 Building Project for the amount of $3,000, $3.25 to be paid for by the Waverly Senior Housing, pay request from State Construction Incorporated for the Waverly Senior Housing 420 Building Project for the amount of $76,592.35 to be paid by Waverly Senior Housing, pay request from McClure Engineering Company for the Waverly Municipal Airport, Runway 29 Extension, construction administration services for the amount of $1,151.21, pay request from McClure Engineering Company for the Waverly Municipal Airport, Runway 29 Extension, construction administration services for the amount of $5,876.49, pay request from McClure Engineering Company for the 20th Street Northwest Improvements 2020 for the amount of $35,077.50, pay request from Snyder and Associates for the 4th Street Southwest Reconstruction 2020 Project for the amount of $29,786.09, pay request from Snyder and Associates for the 10th Street Southwest Improvements 2020 for the amount of $4,145.16, pay request from WHKS and Company for the Adams Bridge Parkway Bridge Repairs 2019 for the amount of $4,713.88, pay request from Josh's Construction for the Sanitary Sewer Manhole Rehab 2019, the amount of $11,115, pay request from Klusner Construction for the crack cleaning infilling 2019 for the amount of $10,877.50, a change of ownership for Walgreens number 12148, and the cash dispersments for July of 2019. Entertained a motion?
I'll move approval of consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made in second, and council discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent calendar say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Consent calendar is hereby approved. Regular business item, number one, determine whether the council should set date, should set a date for discussion of a project to reconfigure Bremer Avenue, Highway 3 to a four-lane configuration. Angus, would you lead that discussion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I asked for this to be brought up at the last meeting, and I think it's something that, I guess Bill, and looking at some of the ordinances and stuff, maybe I didn't have to wait a year, or did have to wait, it's hard to, you know, my understanding has always been that it was a one-year between when the action took place before it could be done again, which was what I was going off of, but if it's different, and maybe that's something we look at in the future, but anyway, I wanted to look at it because there's been a lot of information that has been out in the public, either on social media, in the newspapers, during council presentations, from before we made the conversion to after we made the conversion, and discussion about what is real data and what isn't real data, and who has what information, and is, what's being told fully through, I guess, I'm kind of like what Mr. Frederick said, I would like to see the data with what is the background to it as well, not just some of the numbers, I guess the one piece of information that jumped out to me the most in some of this census was, was the discussion from the DOT coming back and saying that their information on the crash reduction was for crashes of $1,500 or more, and that kind of surprised me, because I don't remember that ever coming up when they were presenting the information about crash reductions initially, they were talking about crash reductions, and so, I think the impression was left by them with everybody that it was a general crash reduction. I do remember them talking about serious crashes being reduced, but it wasn't that it was, that that was what they were basing their figures off of, now it seems like that might have been what they were actually looking at, and so that could have been a little bit of, were we getting the full picture of that before we made our decision, or not? And again, what is, what's the real data that's out there, what's the data that people have been able to pull from other sources, et cetera, I would like to be able to have an actual sit-down and look at that in a little more detail to decide, do we need to really reconsider? In addition, the discussion about converting back to four-lanes, I've heard people talk about, well, it's just paint, go ahead and paint it, but it's more than just paint, there's more that goes into that, and so I think, if the council is going to hold, staying to a three-lane, if that's the way it goes, I think there needs to be clarity in the public that it isn't just a matter of repainting it, what goes into that, the cost that has been thrown out there in terms of what would the cost be to repaint, but also to reset some of the lights, to look at some of the other traffic control measures that have been put in place since the conversion, in addition to, we've got the traffic study coming up next year, and how does that impact whether we make a decision or not? So, again, it's a lot of information that is out there, some of it is real, some of it is one side, or slanted one way or the other, and then there's some, you know, conspiracy theories out there that are completely off the wall in terms of, you know, I never received any payment for any of this, and, I know, from talking with all of my council members, I don't think anybody else did either, but I've heard that was one that continually keeps coming up, and I don't know where that came from, it's just, it's out there because it's out there, and sometimes, if you don't refute those statements and clarify them, those are able to fester a little bit more, you know, the same kind of thing, I read social media a lot, I don't comment all that often on it, just I don't want to get into the mix of that a lot of times, but one of the ones that popped up just this weekend on a similar subject, not necessarily three or four lanes, but was talking about the airport, and people talking about jets coming in, and they're, the expansion of the airport is not going to bring jets in, not unless there are the Harrier jets that are the vertical takeoff and landing, it's not going to be long enough for jets, there's just not possible, so anybody talking about jets coming in is totally misinformed, but that's the problem that gets up, that people hear that, and then they keep repeating it, and repeating it, and repeating it, and it gets into the community that that's what is the fact, when it isn't. So I would like to have that information brought forward, a discussion of it, and potentially to look at, I would like to possibly reconsider that decision.
Okay, first of all, for those of you that are here interested in this project, there will be no vote tonight, this is purely a discussion item, and Mr. Walker's interpretation is, Bremer Avenue project is finished, so any discussion along reconfiguring Bremer Avenue will be the start of a new project, so the council has to decide three things, do they want to initiate that discussion, that possibility of a new project, when do they want to initiate that discussion, and what kind of data do they want to, want to receive from various sources, including, including what this traffic study might bring, what people might have input in records that are, that are available from various sources, and so, we're not looking for any information from anyone necessarily tonight, but that's where it is, so, council can, can decide if they want to initiate a new project, and when they would like that to happen, if they do.
I think it's important, before we get into that, just to make clear, because there is so much different information out there, the reason for these process discussions, and what Bill Walker did for us, and several of us also were doing our own homework on this, and, is that our rules and procedures address two different reconsiderations, one for a resolution, and one for an ordinance. What we passed a year ago, roughly, was a resolution, and it was a resolution supporting the Iowa Department of Transportation's plan to convert Highway 3 through Waverly from a four-lane to a three-lane. Under our rules and procedures, a resolution may be reconsidered by majority vote of all of the members of council, but it can only be made by a member of the prevailing side on the original action, okay, which did not happen, okay? And so I guess that's all we need to say, because it's not an ordinance, all right? The ordinance has different rules for revisiting a decision, so that's how we arrived at the current agenda item, that it must be a new project that is proposed, and I just wanted to hopefully clarify that a bit more, so that people understand better the regulations and the processes that are involved that we are trying to abide by.
Okay, thanks, E, so we'll open it up to council discussion, and see what your, will you want to act on it now, whether you want to wait and see further down the line, or set a timetable of some kind to, to visit this, if you want to visit it.
I'd have to say, when I came here, I actually have a whole list of stuff that was, were my thoughts on why we don't want to revisit this situation, but as Tim was talking, I tend to agree with him, that this has become a rather divisive and a distracting issue, and if it were possible to do an unbiased study, have an independent group or person to come in and do an unbiased study, and take a look at the actual historical results of moving from four-lane to three-lane, and taking a look at the actual number of crashes, and being able to look at that in a non-biased way, and emergency vehicle response times, and pedestrian safety, and all those kinds of issues from an unbiased, a certified unbiased standpoint, I think it would go a long way to maybe relieving some of the problems we have. The only biggest problem I have with that is, how do you find someone who everyone can agree on is unbiased to do the study? Because if the study gets done, and we pay umpteen thousand dollars to have this study done, and results are not the results that someone agrees with, the study's just going to be, you know, turn to be biased, and we've kind of dumped all that money down the drain. I think that from a policy standpoint, it's a, actually, I think it's a good idea to take a look at this again, now that all of this stuff has gone through, probably not until sometime next spring, until we've had a chance to have the Parkway and all that kind of stuff incorporated into this, but I think to have a kind of a, an after-action report, if you will, that says, okay, this is what actually happened, is a good idea, but like I said, my issue is, how do you actually find someone who everyone can agree on as being an unbiased source?
Well, I agree with, I mean, I agree in principle with what you're saying, and I think that's what most, if not all of us, have said about returning to this in the spring with the traffic study included, I mean, have this included as part of the traffic study, and take a very, very close look at that. I have to say, I don't agree at all, and don't appreciate Mr. Schneider's comment about where, that the council and the city are doing studies with desired outcomes. I think we all take our jobs very seriously, and we try to do the best we can, we get the best information we can, we don't have any desired outcomes, except for what we believe, in our best judgment, and not everybody's always going to agree with every one of us all of the time, that we think is for the public good, that's what we're all here doing, and to, you know, attribute anything less than that, and even more nefarious than that to us, is just not appropriate, but it is characteristic of some of the behavior, and that's a problem. So I agree with you on going back and looking at something, but I think that's what we already agreed to, now, yes, how do we get a body, an organization, an individual, who is unbiased? I think none of us would have agreed to the traffic study that we have already approved if we thought that it was biased, I know there are folks who think it is, and, you know, I guess we have to ask ourselves, do we need more evidence? I mean, are we, are we convinced by some of the comments that have been made about the people who will be conducting the traffic study, I mean, do we need to go to a different organization? I think that's an okay conversation to have, but I don't think anybody's disagreed with what you just said, Ron, I mean, I think that's where we kind of are.
I guess the only thing that I have, and maybe Mike Cherry can kind of illuminate this, my understanding from a discussion a couple months ago, was that the traffic study really wouldn't address the, some of the issues we're talking about here with three-lanes and four-lanes, that's really looking more toward future traffic issues, and, you know, how to design collector streets, and those kinds of things, it's really not going to look on the effectiveness of the three-lane, four-lane issue.
Well, I think what, what it would touch upon is optimizing signal coordination up and down the Bremer Avenue corridor, so in that respect, it is going to touch upon, is the three-lane functioning well, what level of service, and those types of things, and can that be improved upon just with more adaptive signals and And can that be improved upon just with more adaptive signals and coordination between the signals?
I mean, the study should cover things like travel time from one end of the city limits to the other. I mean, so we knew how long it took on average to travel the length of the corridor. This study should have new numbers based on our current configuration. So that should be part of the study. I think that we will have the opportunity to say, what do we want to make sure this traffic study includes? And I think that should be part of, you know, the discussion that Tim might be leading us towards. I think that having too much of an in-depth conversation before this study is done is probably not a good use of time. And I think the purpose of the study is going to be to gather the data to evaluate the effectiveness of the reconfiguration, but also to evaluate what our future needs are going to be. And I think that when we discuss that study and we talk about the parameters of that study, we're going to have to identify what are the things that we want studied so that we can have information that informs our evaluation of the current configuration. But I think that spending too much time thinking about it before that study is not productive. I think that when we have that sit down to discuss what's going to be in that study, that's going to be the important discussion. And we want to make sure that evaluating this configuration is part of that study. Now, how we come up with someone to conduct that study that everyone is satisfied with? That's a great question. I do think that there is danger in looking at old data and attempting to reevaluate it. So when we go back and we look at crash numbers and we say, oh, we're not including, you know, crashes below a certain threshold and that's going to change our numbers, that is bad math and bad statistics and it leads to confirmation bias. So I'm putting on my math professor hat here and saying, you got to set your standards before you collect your data. So going back afterwards is just asking for trouble.
Well, there's no doubt that an evaluation of the effectiveness of the configuration that we have right now is going to be shaped by what impact the Parkway has, which has yet to be opened. I'm looking forward to showing up. I told the mayor I might wear a tux, but I was kidding. And therefore, since that's an important piece of what we need to be wearing, weighing, I would suggest that a conversation that comes much before a time when you can see what happens here would be premature. And I would say three months, six months would be minimum to see what's going on. So I'm really not too sympathetic about reopening the conversation before it's going to be useful.
I would agree. I don't think it's useful now. I think we need to wait for the traffic study. I think it's going to be impossible to find someone to do a study that everyone thinks is unbiased. Most people don't see the DOT as biased. The DOT's mission is supposed to be to provide accurate data that helps them and cities and other government entities make decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens as best we can. So I don't think you're going to find an agency that everyone agrees. And that depends on how you define bias, right? I think if the study data or the study results confirm a person's belief and opinion, they tend to see the studier as not biased, right? So I think we need to wait. I don't think looking at it now is useful at all, given that the Parkway hasn't even opened and school hasn't started.
Right.
Be careful on how I kind of phrase this. I shared in an email to Tim that I supported his action of bringing this back up for discussion. And I also shared that I thought the timing was probably not the best. I understand the rationale or the underlying goal here, but the frustrating thing for me has been through this whole process, if it even started before we got done with construction, was the alternate theories that were out there. It's almost like Habel has wrong. I don't know how you unring it. Early on, the discussion was we weren't acting as the majority of the citizens. We had a group of folks that supported the three-lane show up and all of a sudden that topic went away. That it seemed to have gone to... Some of the emails that were forwarded to me postings were the payoffs. The city was being paid off by the DOT. We as council members were being paid off to make this decision. Again, how do you disprove that other than opening my checkbook up and telling folks there's no hidden money anywhere? That kind of died down. Then it seemed like international fire code became the topic for two, three weeks. And it wasn't until our county building folks weighed in as well as DOT and said, what was being cited really didn't have a whole lot to do with roads and paint on the road does not impair emergency vehicles from traveling. Then we had a very heated discussion centered around crash numbers. And we were encouraged by large contingency to follow the numbers. And the DOT was lying to us. And finally, the individual that was raising that question shared his numbers and very quickly it was pointed out he wasn't even using the website correctly to put his numbers together. Once he figured out that his information was incorrect, we got emails to that effect. But then it turned into, well, the numbers might be right, but I don't agree with the way they're put together. Now, emergency response time seems to be the hot button. I don't know how you go back and unring all of this because it's been hammered on so hard and so, at times maliciously. I don't know how you, with any study, if you could find somebody to do it in a non-biased would satisfy how deeply this has been rooted in people through a campaign of false information, inaccurate information. And yeah, I just don't know how you're going to do that. Well, it's gotten quite deep. I received an email this afternoon that the person that sent it stated that his children were bullied in Coleman Park while they were playing because they had made the comment that they kind of thought Bremer Avenue was safer now than it was before. And there's absolutely no call anywhere in this society for anyone to, as a parent, to instill their opinion in their children to pass on and do that. We've tried to combat the divisiveness in this community and that's a statement that absolutely has no place and will divide the community as quick as anything. But I think at this point, I'm getting consensus at the council that's a feeling that they would like to wait until we have more data that we can gather, traffic studies for instance, and we'll bring it up at a later date closer to that time and see what happens. Am I correct?
I would say the next time to talk about it is when we set the parameters for the traffic study.
Okay.
Am I right in understanding that this agenda item does not anticipate a vote?
That's correct. I think it was discussion item only and everyone has... need their feelings known and...
Is it... I was going to say, I think it would be helpful for Mike Cherry and whoever else decides the parameters of a traffic study, maybe bring the list of the sites that are going to be looked at and, you know, we want it to be useful data and look at... We already identified another potential place around the hospital that we might want to see if that could be studied. So there will be other areas of town as well.
How far down the road are we with the employment of the consultant for this traffic study and is what we're suggesting possible at this point in time?
First of all, the consultant that was mentioned was about the housing study, not the traffic studies.
Oh, right. The traffic study... Who's doing the traffic study?
We don't...
You don't know yet. So we do have input into that then? I mean, we have an opportunity for the kinds of things we're talking about. Okay.
When would we be putting out a bid on that or...
Well, I have a recommendation for a consultant who is familiar with Waverly and has done signalization work back in 2009 on Bremer Avenue. They're very familiar with the community. If it's helpful, I think it might be advantageous to have a few council members meet with them and then decide whether or not they want to request proposals or qualifications from other consultants as opposed to going out and going through the full-blown RFP or RFQ process. We did that previously. This is a consultant that has been engaged with the community over many, many years in doing signal work, corridor studies, those types of things with us. So that'd be my first suggestion. As far as timing, you know, I would probably suggest having that meeting before Thanksgiving and then making a decision so that if we did choose to go out for other proposals or to interview other consultants, that we'd be able to do that in a timely manner. The intent is to do the traffic counting in April before the full... before the construction season gets full underway, but we also want to make sure that school's in session, college is in session, those types of things. So I'd like to have them under contract, possibly in December, but certainly no later than February.
Would going to a full RFP or RFQ process, would that add to the expense at all or just... it just extends the timeframe when we want to be rolling on doing things?
It certainly extends the timeline and we'd want to... if we want to do that, we'd want to start sooner. So there is time and effort put in by the consultants, obviously, but they're... this is what they do. And so, you know, we try to develop, you know, long-term relationships with a variety of consultants over a variety of skill sets. And I know these people. They do a very good job and they're kind of towards the top of my list, but there are certainly other firms out there that may be worth investigating, but I'd kind of defer to you after, you know, if you want to meet with this firm first.
I guess my feeling, kind of some of the feelings that have come and expressed around town, I'm not sure I want to go to a no bid on this. I'd like to...
RFP, you mean?
Do an RFP.
Do an RFP, not do a no bid. Just, you know...
I understand. I know we've had people that we have worked with in the past and have... we have relationships with, but I think for this process, I think we need to look at having some competition or something.
I would agree with that if there's no additional cost. I mean, I understand time's a cost too, but no additional financial cost and no jeopardy to a relationship that we value in terms of work with the city. Or, I mean, if all things being equal and if you're fairly confident that they would submit an RFP as well as one or two... well, two or three other, probably not just one, but maybe, maybe two other bids or two more RFPs, I think that would be better too. I would agree with that.
Are you required to take the low bid?
I don't think so.
Or not? How do you then decide?
RFP, we're choosing one we feel most comfortable with first.
Yeah, because that's not really a... I mean, I mean, an RFP doesn't... that's not a... it's not a bid per se.
Because they're giving different services.
Right. So we could choose a different provider, right?
I think... Yeah. So let me put a timeline together.
Okay.
One of the first things that we'll need to do is identify the scope of the services that we want to do. So I'll do that and then we'll bring it back to the council probably September study session maybe and see if that meets the council's, you know, scope of services, you know, and have a discussion about kind of the intent of the study and, you know, staff. Staff has a list of intersections that we want to look at and we have all 14 signalized intersections and we have like another 10 non-signalized intersections that we want to look at, but there may be others, input from the council. So we can do that, September study session, come back in October and solicit RFPs, put a selection committee together and get this process rolling so that we can get a contract before council in December.
Because you'll have to determine how many RFPs you want to accept. You could get as many as you wanted and then do you want to bring in some for interviews that we've done with possibly in the past? It is a process.
Sure.
This isn't something we do overnight. So it'll take some time.
I mean, I've been involved in those before and I, you know, I think there is value to them, but again, you have to weigh it against what, you know, what you lose. And so, you know, I think I would want staff to let us know if there is a downside to this too so that we can weigh that.
If we start soon enough, there is no downside.
They're used to this. To an extent, this is kind of what they do.
So it would be a probability of putting a committee together out of the council?
Council, staff.
And staff, yeah. So that involves two or three members of the council.
Typically, we have like a five-member review committee, five or six members. So a couple of staff, two, three council members oftentimes are involved in that.
I would just like to support what Edie and Tim said. I think because of the sensitivity of this issue, it's important that we have an RFP and not just do a selection.
No, I would agree. Okay.
Thank you for putting this on for at least some discussion today.
Yep. Are we ready to move on to the next item? If there are any that would like to leave, feel free to do so. We'll wait for a moment before we cause a lot of disruption. Would you like to close the door, please? Resolution 19-136, citing the public hearing date for the approval of a transfer of unused right-of-way parcel from the Cedar River Parkway project pursuant to the purchase contract. I'd entertain a motion.
I move approval of Resolution 19-136 citing the public hearing date for September 9, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall for the approval of a transfer of unused right-of-way parcel from the Cedar River Parkway project to Timothy and Jody Griggs pursuant to the purchase contract.
Two seconds. I'll submit a second in council discussion.
Just a little confused. If it's already taken care of in a purchase agreement, why are we having to act on it again?
Well, you approved the purchase agreement, so technically you probably would have approved the idea of adding as consideration for the purchase we made for the Parkway. It looks cleaner than when you're actually... Um, it looks cleaner than when you're actually transferring property, that you have to show that you have a resolution, you have a public hearing and a resolution to actually transfer the property.
So, we've kind of approved it already, this is just formality to...
Otherwise, it wouldn't look good for the title, the lawyers looking at the title. They'll say, where's, where's the resolution that approved the, the transfer title?
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Blotstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Resolution 19 dash 136 set a public hearing for September 9th on unused parcels acted Timothy and Jody Griggs approved. Item number three, setting a public hearing date to review the East Bremer Avenue sanitary sewer extension 2019 project plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. Would you entertain a motion?
I move approval of, um, setting a public hearing date for October 7th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of city hall to review the East Bremer Avenue sanitary sewer extension 2019 project plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, council discussion.
Okay, this is unplanned, so funding for it is coming from where?
Uh, we're looking at water sewer, not water, I guess it'd be sewer revenue potentially. Uh, we may have some funding through assessments and if possible, we may bond for a small part of it maybe to backfill, but I think primarily we're looking at, is it sewer fund? What's that? And then TIF amendment, thank you. Uh, that would allow us to do a contract project for that. Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, I, I fully support doing anything and everything we can to encourage expansion to the east. I think that's a section of the community that had been neglected for years from folks that are looking for a good place to come to the city with new things, so, um, the addition of being able to service the rest of this lot, I think is well worth the investment.
Am I seeing this right, Carla, that this is a voice vote?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Any other council discussion? All those in favor of setting a public hearing date for October 7th for sanitary sewer East Bremer review, say yes.
Yes.
Posed? Resolution or motion is, is approved. First reading of ordinance 1065, an ordinance approving the policy statement, connection fee schedule and connection district plat for East Bremer sanitary sewer extension 2019 project and setting a public hearing date.
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance 1065, an ordinance approving the policy statement, connection fee schedule and connection district plat for East Bremer sanitary sewer extension 2019 project and setting September 9th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of city hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, council discussion.
So, this tying to Dan's question of part of the funding for this project?
Yeah, this wouldn't be an assessment, but it would be a connection fee. So, it would only be charged to somebody who would actually connect to the sewer. And we tried to identify the, the parties that could readily be, access the sewer and then we identified a, a potential connection fee or a connection fee for those uses. Um, it doesn't mean that they have to hook up, but especially for, um, let's see, the existing residential, um, property owners, if they in fact had an issue with their septic systems, it would probably be a lot cheaper to go across the road and, and hook up to a sewer main as opposed to redoing their septic system. It'll also promote some, some development on those parcels that are between the old Schneider Milling that's now Nutrien and 39th Street because those lots were not served by sewer yet. So, those lots can now be, um, hopefully developed and be served by sewer out front. And then the Hannawalt Farms property north of the, the new Titan would be a ability to, to serve those properties. So, it really does open up quite a bit of additional space.
How do you determine what the connection fee is?
That was, that was a difficult, um, we, Mike and I spent some time talking about that. We looked at old projects. Um, you, you had to kind of compare them to water projects or sewer projects that weren't exactly like this. So, what we tried to do is estimate what's a reasonable amount. I think even the residential customer, I think we had one within the city limits that when we got close to them, we made a deal for them to hook up for $10,000. So, it was, that kind of matched that residential portion. Uh, the rest of it's just kind of estimating what those business customers or commercial customers might spend on setting up the septic system. And obviously to avoid doing septics and hooking them up to our sanitary sewers the best.
So, you have Titan and one of the Hannawalt listings are, those are higher fees and that's because why?
Well, they, they're bigger properties. We, we look more at the size of the property that could be subdivided and redeveloped. So, if, if, you know, Titan's first connection is going to be the 20 and so would the first connection on the remaining Hannawalt property, but, but after that, every connection thereafter would be 10,000 for each additional connection. You, you really sort of look at a reasonable amount in these situations and, and attempt to, to come up with a fairness so that you're comparing people with, or the property owners. The two buyer lots, um, are only three acres each and so those were 10,000 each and, and the Titan property is, is, uh, six acres. If we move farther north for the Hannawalt property, because we've only gone to the edge of that Hannawalt property, the remaining, if we went farther north, we'd have to probably extend the sewer and at that point we'd add a connection fees for that extension to the north. So, again, we try, we'll try to be consistent with how we do connection fees if we add on to this sewer main and go north.
Maybe a question, comment considering some of the discussions we've had recently about groundwater, those type of things. I'm assuming it would be easier for the, the residential properties there to hook into it as we're installing it and wondering if we can incentivize them by bringing down the cost a little bit to, to get off their septic system, hook into it as we're laying it in and get a few properties.
I really haven't looked at where their septics would be and where they would have to connect. Right now, they'd have to go onto the road, so taking across the road and we'd have to extend the sewer main farther north unless we wanted to bring their lines down to that manhole that's going to be on the south edge of the most south property. So, it really isn't readily accessible to them yet. And, and we really didn't look at that because none of them were really asking us to do that. I mean, they weren't indicating that they had any problems with their septics or, and most people would want to keep going with what they have until they have to change over. So, I think it's really a future-type thing for them as it extends north along 39th. It'll always be available to shoot across and, and get to the sewer main across the road. We probably wouldn't break, it wouldn't be on the other side. Nutrien owns that north lot that's north of the, the current, um, the milling operation and the other buildings over there. The far north part of that property can actually connect to the, the existing sewer main or part of it could. So, it, it just depends on what's built on that larger property and the, the expanse of the property.
I don't disagree, Dan. I think we'd rather see that hookup versus septic systems. And so, if we get to the point where we do have a reason to take that north past those properties while it's open, I think we could revisit the cost of it and see what it would take, a little more of a better estimate at that point in time. Right now, we just simply don't know where the septic is, how it'll come in, as Bill said, you got to cross that road. But, uh, yeah, if we have a reason to take it that far north, we can certainly look at that and maybe incentivize them to do that versus keeping that septic.
Just looking at the, those lots on the west side, where the residents are, I would venture to say the septic tanks go to the west.
At the back.
Out the back, it'd be very difficult for them to, to, to hook up, so, but, okay. Any other comments, questions?
Just a question as to why the date, this one is September, the previous one was October for the public hearing?
One, the plans aren't done. And if we were to wait to set the public hearing, uh, cause this is the 19th, the next opportunity is not until September 9th. And so, it really kind of starts to throw the entire, you know, formal letting, notification, you know, we have to go through certain publications of the notice to bid and public hearings. So, um, we needed to, uh, take action now to set the public hearing date and that gives us a window of opportunity to, you know, we don't have to publish tomorrow, you know, but we're able to meet our publication requirements for the notice of letting and then there's a different one for the notice of public hearing and this allows us to do that.
And that'll be the third reading of the ordinance that, that I propose. So, that's the public hearings on the 9th, but the third reading will be on the October 7th.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Blotstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 1065, saying fee schedule, fee and connections scheduled for the sanitary sewers approved, 7-0. Resolution 19 dash 134, approving the recommendations from the review committee and awarding facade grants for downtown merchants. Would you entertain a motion?
I will move approval of resolution 19 134, approving the recommendations from the review committee and awarding facade grants in the total amount of $77,794.67 to the following recipients. Gerald Wooden, $8,730. Paula and David Stevenson, $14,000. Root Enterprises LLC, $14,000. John Rieger Trust, $1,833.67. Waverly Real Estate LLC, $14,000. Mission Properties LLC, $14,000. Crawdadd Borough LLC, $7,500. Beau Ellison, Cynthia Hendrickson, $3,731.
To a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, council discussion.
So, I have a couple of questions. So, the first one that pops, pops to mind is when I was looking over this, I saw that there were kind of two, um, what seemed to be two rules for how much money someone was awarded. So, it seemed that they could get no more than $14,000 and no more than 50% of their project. And that worked for everyone's proposal, or everyone's dollar amount except for the Crawdaddy, which was set at $7,500. What made them special?
So, the committee started discussing, when we looked at the different proposals, the, um, the awning that was proposed by Crawdadd was a, um, a wooden log and wood type and it was very expensive compared to the other ones that were asked for by other people. So, what they said was, the, the committee decided that they would give Crawdaddies the same amount, 50% of the same amount that others were spending on different kinds of awnings. Because I think they, they decided that if you wanted the Cadillac, were we gonna pay, give you half of the Cadillac or were we gonna give you half of the, the one that everybody else is doing? And so, I think that's kind of how they got the numbers down close to that $75,000 limit that we were given. It was either that or you could, we could reduce to others. I, I think they decided that that was a better way of providing some fairness to the process. That's the best I can describe the discussion.
And the other thing that, that was kind of, I didn't see in here was somehow a description of, of how the decisions were made, what the decisions were based on. So, I mean, it, it said kind of who, you know, described who the committee was that was making the decision, but what I didn't see was some sort of, I don't want to say rubric, but kind of what were the criteria that were being used to evaluate the different proposals? Cause you said there were, there were eight that were approved, so there were four that were not approved. What was the traits of those four that somehow weren't approved? And I suppose I, I should also, I mean, one of my concerns is that, you know, it would be wrong to say that all the people got grants are because they're, you know, friends with people on the committee. That's not kind of appropriate. So, that's really kind of what I want, is some sort of reassurance that there was specific criteria that was used to evaluate these proposals.
Let, let me add just one comment on here if I may. And I was, as I was going through this item on the agenda, reviewing it, this caused me some unease also frankly. I, I feel like we may have abdicated our oversight responsibility a little bit on this and I, I agree with Brian. I mean, I, I think the people on the review committee, I commend them for the job they did. I'm, I'm sure they did a wonderful job and, and I think that this is an exceptional program. I'm glad we did it, but, you know, I, I do really feel that it would be helpful if we had a little bit more information to be able to actually fulfill our oversight responsibilities on this.
Well, in terms of, um, at, at least one of them had already done their project previously and we had already decided that we weren't going to award anything, or we weren't going to recommend awarding anything to somebody who had already finished their, their project. So, that was one of them. One of them was not on Bremer Avenue and since we had requests for more than what we had to do, um, we decided that we could limit to what projects we had directly on Bremer Avenue. The third was a, um, the replacement of the existing sign that didn't have anything to do with really the improvement of the facade or an awning or something of that nature. It was just a commercial sign. I thought there was 11, so I thought there was just three that we turned down, but I...
Full applications.
So, I mean, what was the process? Did you sit down with the business owner and look at their plans and discuss what they wanted to do and how they thought that would improve their street appeal or what was the actual process?
We had applications. Many of them provided estimates and pictures and proposals for how it would look and what they would use. Some were more detailed than others. Um, we also looked at storefronts that had, um, a lot of need, just to put it bluntly. I know there's several storefronts that we had hoped would get into this, um, would ask for this kind of a grant and did in fact do so. So, we were looking for our most difficult storefronts to maybe help approve them and, and those were, they were willing to say, yep, I really know I need help and I really liked this grant program to do that. Beyond that, what we, what we decided was, we are still requiring them to supplement what their proposals were and that they will have to show that they will spend the money that, that generates the maximum grant. If they decided not to spend as much money as they proposed, um, I think one of them said that they were going to spend between 28 and $30,000 and we put it down for 30, but they really expected that it may be as, as 28 or less. So, it's really going to be half of whatever it is. You know, we went through each one of them. We talked about the buildings. We talked about what they were planning to do with the buildings. The committee members were trying to get the maximum exposure to, to the appearances on Bremer, um, the appearances to the new street, the new streetscape that's going to go in. It was, it's difficult not to, to, to look at ones and say, when you have limited funds and you don't have enough to give everybody a grant, where do you cut and how do you do it? And we had started out wanting the maximum grants to be 15,000, but we wanted a few of these smaller ones to be able to, to have some money for what they were going to put up. I think actually Mr. Rieger already put up his awning. There were, the four that were not selected were, had some significant differences than the rest of them, I thought.
And how was it advertised to businesses? And was it open, it's a pretty chamber-heavy committee, I'm a supporter of the chamber, but was it open to all businesses, not just chamber members?
Oh, yes. We didn't even look at that. I walked up and down the street and stopped at as many places as I could. We communicated with them, we sent out letters, we did what we could to basically let them know about the projects. I think next year, or the year after, I'd like to ask you for more money to do it again, maybe not as quite as much money, but I think it's a valuable thing to help the downtown businesses with, and I'm hopeful that we'll see how it works out, and everything goes well, and everything looks, everybody's got a wow factor, we can say, well, let's do it again, and let's set aside a few dollars for that next year.
So that would be for the 21 budget?
Yes. For the budget we'd be talking about this fall.
I agree with that. I think it's a great program, and I fully support it. I guess my concern is to make sure that we have enough safeguards in there that we're not accused of showing favoritism toward certain businesses over others is my major concern. And, you know, maybe we can put some kind of, something in the program so that we can see what the criteria were. A great, one of the great ones on objective criteria, maybe we can do something like that, so we can make sure that we can show people that, yes, we're using criteria, we're not just being subjective and determining who gets the money based on who we like and who we don't like.
I would welcome help on that, because we thought a lot about how to do that, and objectively, every one of these projects seem to be quite different, and it's really hard to judge.
I understand. I'm not coming up with a solution, I'm just telling you what my concern was.
We hope that we had enough money to cover everybody's request, as long as it qualified. So that's...
But I think even just, I think even just putting that in your memo to us, right? How did you, how did you recruit people? How did you, what did you look at when you sat down? The fact that it is hard, because they are going to be a little different, and, you know, I need to judge which one's better, et cetera, and if, but I think that would answer some of those questions.
Was the application itself sort of a standard form?
Yes. Yes, and requested standardized information.
Okay.
And again, we weren't, this was also an invitation to apply for a grant, and so not everybody was able to find a contractor that they could work with to actually give them hard numbers.
Right, right.
So there's a lot, there's some estimates, but they had ideas about what they wanted to do and how they could do it. Now that they know that they have the grant, they can go back and get bids and quotes from some of the contractors that weren't really wanting to do, or they didn't want to do that, and put the contractor through that hard work without knowing that they were going to get some money and know what their budget would be. So it's a new project for us, a new type of grant.
It's a great idea.
It's not probably a lot different than what I see the state doing, because I looked at some of these grant situations that were being awarded, a lot of times there's two staff members in Des Moines doing it.
Right.
And talk about subjective, that's probably what a lot of those are too. So we try to be more objective in the sense of having a variety of people that we selected to help with the input, and we didn't, we didn't have to turn down too many, and there were reasons for turning down several, but I'd like to do it again at some point, and we'll, we can talk about that during budget time.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I just think putting the information in there without even, you know, without us asking, then there aren't any questions.
Well, we also have...
You just anticipate the questions, and you put them in the memo, and then it's clear.
Like to give you chances for participation.
I know. We appreciate that.
So this may be a silly question, but were there any applications from people on the other side of the street?
I noticed that.
Was it all the north side?
They probably get more sun rays in on the north.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you the reason that is, is because they lost, the one block lost their canopy, and they were used to having canopies, and everyone else lost some trees, and so you have a variety of people that have been dealing with the sun coming in the windows and fading all their clothes, and, you know, having to fade the products that are there, so they have to change them in and out. So they realized how valuable it was to have canopies and awnings, which is kind of what we were really emphasizing to the applicants, is that, the use of that for that purpose.
I guess that's kind of where my question is. I know, sitting in on the chamber meetings, there was discussion periodically about corridors, the entrances to town, and having a common look and feel, knowing that one business owner wants to go of, again, this is not, your version of Cadillac versus my version can be different, but a different style than maybe some of the rest, with any consideration given to design standards, or trying to allow the businesses to have their own identity, but tie into that corridor feel.
Yeah, we tried to, we actually did try to do that, because the one thing that we saw when we looked at different other grant programs is that they had strict criteria, and they were turn-of-the-century type, paying homage to what was happening in 1900 or whatever. And we knew we weren't there for our downtown, because our downtown is already a variety of different looks and a variety of different creative things. And, you know, we struggled with the one, with the one that didn't get more, and I, if we could find more money, I'd love to, I'd love to help that along, just because, but I think we were trying to be fair in saying, most of them were using the same category of awning to create the good, the new look. And this one was, you know, much more, I mean, detailed in the way it was being proposed. They had to find a way to cut it down to $75,000 or get it close to that, so I think that's where we ended up with doing that. I don't think they thought that they didn't deserve, or they thought their idea was not a good idea. It's just, at what point do you say, you can have the regular-priced proposal, or you can have the luxury? I mean, you're right, though, I mean, I wouldn't say it's a luxury, it really would have fit in, it will fit in if they still do it, but it's a very nice-looking addition, so we hope he still wants to do it, but...
I would say that Crawdaddy has a very distinctive frontage in front of their store, and it would be silly for them to put something in front that doesn't match what they've already got there. So, I mean, I don't know how much of, that's the determining factor here, but they have put a lot into that storefront already. So, yeah, I would hope that they would continue to match what they've got going on there.
Any further comments, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Rothie.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Excuse me. Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cengis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 19 dash 134 approving facade grants is hereby approved, seven zero. Resolution 19 dash 135 approving the quote for the completion of a basketball slab at Rolling Hills Park. Entertained a motion.
We will move approval of resolution 19 dash 135 approving the quote for the completion of a basketball slab at Rolling Hills Park from Feldman Concrete of Dyersville, Iowa in amount of $7,980.
Second. Motion made, second. Council discussion.
I just have one clarification here. This money is coming from the capital improvements, from the parks' capital improvement budget, it's not from the general fund. Because the money that had been budgeted in 2017 or whatever went back into the general fund, but this is going to come out of the current year capital improvements budget.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. I want to point out, though, that it was not budgeted for this year.
Right, I know that. Is that going to cause a problem? And this is not a very large amount, but...
Right. It'll just, it'll be an amendment to the budget.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Cher.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Cengis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 19 dash 135 approving the quote for basketball slab at Rolling Hills Park is hereby approved. Reports from boards and commissions, golf commission minutes, May 14, 2019, received into record. Golf commission minutes, June 11, 2019, received into record. Leisure airport commission minutes, June 13, 2019, received into record. Leisure services commission minutes, June 20, 2019, received into record. Monthly financials for June 2019 and July 2019, received into record. Golf commission minutes, July 9, 2019, received into record. For every senior calendar, August 2019, received into record. Leads us to staff comments.
Yes, sir, I believe we have a few.
Go ahead.
Thanks. I just wanted to let everyone know that the pool is closed for the season. Last council meeting, we had a question about the attendance this year. I do have the final numbers. We had 16,675 for daily attendance, and that did not include the 96 dogs that we had yesterday. We ended up with 20 dogs for retrieving freedom, and then 76 public dogs for the dog swim. So it was a pretty successful dog swim yesterday.
Garrett, how do the numbers compare to last year or previous years in terms of attendance?
Over the last five years, we've been right between the 16,000 and 20,000 marks. We're down about 1,000 people from last year, about 1,000 for attendance.
Not bad considering the weather at the, you know, first part of the summer.
We had some really great days in July, but I just counted up here, and I was just taking into account any days that I had an attendance under 25, where we actually, you know, had numbers, and there were 18 of those days. So, you know, that, that cut into the attendance pretty good.
And that's more than usual? I mean, those kinds of days?
I don't know that for sure. I have not looked back at the pre-...
But you're not concerned about attendance?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
So Garrett, are these dog swims common? Are we the only people in the universe that are doing this?
It'd be nice to say that we were pioneers in that, but they are all over right now. There's a lot of neighboring communities that theirs will be coming up, either, you know, they've had their pool open, maybe the beginning of this week, and they'll be doing one next week. I don't know any exact dates for the neighboring communities, but, yeah, seems like everyone's doing them now as a nice end of the season.
In response to your question, Mike, there are some of the communities that have a pool in their dog parks year-round, or one that's not froze, but there's some of those cropping up in magazines that I get at the office here periodically that...
These are pampered dogs, they get their own pool.
Any other staff comments?
Tomorrow's a big day. We're going to be able to come down and watch the mayor give a little speech at the dedication of the parkways. So that's going to occur between, well, about 10:30 is when the mayor and a couple others will provide some words of wisdom. But from 9:30 to 10:30, the public is invited to come on down to the west end of the project over by the soccer complex. We have utilized the parking lot at the east end of the soccer complex. I have to walk about 100 yards or so to get to the project site, but you'll be able to come, walk around on the bridge, check things out for about an hour, and then we'll have a little ribbon-cutting ceremony, again, some words of wisdom from local leaders. And then probably somewhere around 10:45 to 11 o'clock, somewhere in there, is when we will move the barricades aside, and it will officially be open to the public. Just be mindful that the speed limit is 45, and usually when roadways like this are first opened, sometimes you get people doing 20 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour, might be speeding up, slowing down, checking things out. That is often very common for the first couple of weeks, and then people kind of get over the newness of it, and...
Stop speeding.
...right along. So we do have a site picked out for local law enforcement. We do need paid for that.
It's a nice kind of green pad and everything right there, doesn't it?
Right. So...
Absolutely.
But we certainly do invite people to come on down. It is an opportunity to actually walk out on the bridge. It is the longest bridge in Bremer County. It's 820 feet in length. It's more than 100, it's either 125 or 225 feet longer than the next longest bridge in Bremer County. So...
Which is where?
The second one.
Which is where? Yeah.
I think it's the, the DOT bridge is just north of Janesville, over the Cedar River. They're either 575 or 675, something like that. So, but you'll certainly be able to walk or bike on the trail later, so you'll be able to check it out after the roadway's open. There is a little forecast of rain, so if you do come out early, it is supposed to clear off by the time we have a ribbon cut in, so hope to see you there.
Any other staff comments?
I think that's it, sir.
No.
Or, sorry, excuse me.
I was informed today by the 2020 U.S. Census, actually, that they are already in the community, and so you may be getting some door-to-door visits. Staff might be answering questions for the people working for the U.S. Census, trying to help them find addresses and so forth, so just wanted to give everybody a heads-up that they should have a badge. Feel free to check them for your own safety, for your own curious reasons, doesn't matter, they should have them to present to you. So please participate as much as you can, fully.
We're good. Thanks, Charlie. That was going to be one of my questions for the public, because they will have identifying badges and material. Council comments. City council comments.
I'd just like to thank Mike and all of the staff really on this huge project. It's really great, and I know it took a lot of work, a lot of attention to detail, and not always supported by everybody, you know, all of those things that make a project difficult and yet good in the end, so, yeah, job well done.
Let's go out there and see what $9 million looks like.
Just kind of add on to that, I think the PFA-type announcements have been put out here lately on project updates, those type of things. I think the public are finding them very helpful, useful. It's a good way to keep them engaged, to keep them up to date, and hopefully it's helping with some of the rumors that tend to get propagated around these type of things.
So I had a member of the public complain to me about traffic, and I wanted to pass that on, different traffic location. So this is on First Street Southeast, north of the Cedar Parkway, kind of between Cedar Parkway and Crestwood. The complaint is there's lots of people who are using that as a thoroughfare and speeding through that residential neighborhood faster than they should. So I just wanted to kind of pass that complaint on, that we may need to see, find some way to slow down the traffic through that residential neighborhood, perhaps someone special to keep an eye on it for us.
Is that just east of the cemetery?
Yeah, just east of the cemetery. So, so these are kind of people who are, maybe they want to avoid making that left turn at Burger King, so they're going down, so they can get to the Cedar Parkway faster. But, yeah, that was kind of the concern, there's lots of people who are going through that residential neighborhood much faster than they should. I mean, she was, she was hypothesizing the week, put speed bumps or stop signs or something else in there, but I think there's probably less invasive ways to slow down that traffic, so. And I would like to invite anyone who'd like to come discuss city council politics. I will be at the... politics. I will be at the poorhouse afterwards.
We hope that we're coming up on school, coming back into session. So we really start Friday.
Friday.
So kids will be out and excited and getting to school and not necessarily always paying attention to traffic. So please be a little extra alert tonight. I know Warburg's starting to come back into session. I've noticed my, my regular cross-country runners that come running past the house on a regular basis have started up again. So they're out there as well.
Did the bed ramps get done by the high school and West Cedar?
This week.
This week. Good.
It's going to be a busy week, but we've been in communication with the school and they're aware of what, what to expect and when.
Good.
I appreciate the report that we entered into the record on the Ball Diamond Task Force first meeting. And we have three folks around the table who are part of that. I'm just curious, after the first meeting, was it, what's the spirit there? And is there a feeling that there's some, going to be some good progress? Are we, are the folks having food fights or what's it looking like?
I'll comment. We had another meeting tonight and I think the spirit is good, positive. And they are taking it seriously and weighing the pros and cons of things. And I think they're making good progress.
Hardest part is holding the reins back because they really want, they want to get, they want to move.
Which is good.
Is there a point at which the council should anticipate a formal report?
I think we asked one for one.
October study session.
Oh, right. October. Yeah. Very good. Thanks.
I think based on tonight's discussion, there will be one earlier than that, maybe in September. We'll see.
Not, not a final report.
Not a final, but...
Very good. Thank you.
Any other council comments? I'm trying not to belabor the time any longer, but Second Street Northeast and Cedar Lane intersection has been changed. And there's, I've just talked to by a nearby resident Saturday morning at Farmer's Market, concerned that the bike trail for the, yeah, see the trail system is really close to that intersection. And the comment is that people don't stop there anyway. So, or don't stop very often. So we need to, I don't know if there's any plans to put a rail for a distance to keep bikers and bikers away from the vehicular traffic or not.
You bring up, you mentioned something that kind of caught my attention, that there's no stop sign there. Maybe it's time to consider a stop sign in lieu of the yield because this is, this is going to be more of a direct tee as opposed to coming in at an angle.
I think it'd be worth some, worth some discussion. And they may not stop anyway, but at least it would, it would be a...
I understand it's shady. The street is shaded.
Oh.
So there's some shady parking locations around there.
Okay.
Same thing on First Street Southeast. I believe that's a very shady street.
The other question that was posed to me or comment that was posed to me, is there now, is now a gate on Eighth Street near the new bridge, near the Parkway?
Yes.
And that apparently interferes with fishing access that people have been using.
Well, we're of the view that having an access down there is going to lead to undesirable activity after dark and that there could be a lot of artwork left on some very new concrete bridge beers. So we still intend to have a trail system down there for walking. You're just going to have to park a little further away. But it, I guess it is, our recommendation at this point is to gate that and let's get our grass reestablished, let's, let's get our trail system reestablished. And then I, I think that there maybe should be opportunity for some public discussion. But have it gated. If there are any headlights that are seen down there in the evening hours, we know that those are vehicles that should not be there. So I think it would help head off a lot of undesirable nighttime activity.
And I think that's something you've discussed from the beginning, that, that area there, right? That, that was something we wanted to pay attention to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was the other comment is that apparently there's a secondary boat ramp down there that people have been using. So...
It was a, when it was private property, it was a private boat ramp. It's, it's quite steep and not necessarily desirable, but yes, there was one.
But now it's city property, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Some other comments. Mike's well aware of it and I imagine James and Bill are, we did not get funding for the last half mile of trail on 10th Avenue from one application that we made.
Right. It was, we, we, we've already been approved for regional TAP funding, which is Transportation Alternatives Program. So that money was already secured and set aside. We were hoping to be able to achieve a little higher funding level through the State Recreational Trails Program. And they funded these projects and we were the next one in line. So we, this is a 2021 project. Our recommendation would be to reapply again a year from now. And we've already had that conversation with Intercog and they're like, good idea. They think that that, you know, it's still a viable project.
Very good. We did, we're awarded by the CD or for, or CDGB grant, $231,000 for housing rehab.
Oh, good.
That's the one we didn't get the year before.
We got that grant this year, yes.
Yeah.
Found that extra half point we missed.
Right. Speaking of subjective and objective.
The cost is $15,000.
Right.
So we'll...
It's okay if we got it.
No, we got it and we can begin to take applications for...
We'll start, we'll be moving forward with recontacting people. What we did before was a prequalification. So if you're in that area, you should be asking. I've had several people come in and ask. So we will be requalifying people because you have to requalify for the grant itself. And it's a good time that if somebody didn't qualify before, but may have been close, they might qualify now. And there's some new people that have moved in that we know about that have been referred to us. And we hope that we can get them qualified. So we want to spend the money. We don't want to hold on to it.
But it was very good news to, I think it was $6 short of 231,000, something like that. But, and also back in April, I found out, Waverly, through funding from the Cedar Trails Partnership, Waverly purchased three cameras for the trail system. One's on the bridge across the cedar here, one's at what they refer to as the Bantam Bridge on 12th Street, and one's out on Kildere Avenue. And they're maintained by Intercog and read by Intercog. And lo and behold, I printed out the data that's been accumulated since April they were put in. Garrett and I have talked about it and we agreed to share that information. There's graphs of all kinds plus an actual daily count, which may or may not be accurate because the fellow from Intercog says a wasp can trigger those. And on June 8th, there was over 600 people used to kill deer.
A lot of wasps.
Mayflies or whatever. But, and the other interesting thing is there were three weeks in, in July that five people spread over three days used the, the bridge across the cedar here for the town. So Garrett's going to share those with the council at study session, which will be of interest to you and the public. Other than that, just a reminder, as Mike referred to, the opening of the Parkway tomorrow morning and we'll be on our way. So I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
It's moved. Second.
Question for adjournment. Oh, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. They are adjourned.